Board meeting room of Stanley T. Williams Community Center on Thursday, December 19th, 2019. Roll call.
Chairman Pappaholter. Vice Chair Candelaora.
Here.
Secretary Siena.
Here.
Jana Bolzamo.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Here.
Marcy Anafrio.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Here.
Please stand to switch the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No visitors? Student representatives?
NBHS hosted another successful school-wide full-assembly on November 27 that included PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports. Assistant Principal Mr. Greg Guads organized the event and included parent invitations for the students who were recognized. Students submitted over 500 positive referral nominations for their peers prior to the event. During the assembly, the NBHS Thunder Center Fall Sports Season Review was also viewed by this group of produced by Mr. Nick Delizia and his communication and TV production students. The NBHS Winter Concert was held on September 17 with selection performed by the concert band Jazz Ensemble, chorus, and chamber choir. During each holiday season, the music department provides public performances such as the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, as well as including visits to the NB senior center and a performance for eight creators. Lastly, the annual shed writing conference took place at NBHS December 13. The writing conference includes several published authors presenting workshops to Shoreline Conference member schools and their students. Ms. Dodd, NBHS's English teacher, organized the event once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Katie, you've met everyone on the board, right?
Yes.
Well done.
All right, good job.
Free to go.
You can go. You can say whatever you want to do.
Mary, should there be lights? I know I push the button.
Approval of minutes? Is there any discussion?
On page seven, there's a title. Just wanted to throw things. Under the policy change of changes. Has an extra A, that's all.
Do you want me to take out the A?
No, you could leave it in. Not that. Someone might see it online and go, "Oh, yeah." Can't stop.
Is there anything else? And then can I have a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of November 21st, 2019 Board of Ed meeting as corrected.
Second. All in favor? I would like to make a motion to approve the resignation of William McKinney, mathematics teacher at North Branford High School effective December 20th, 2019. Discussion? Call. Second. Sorry, is there a discussion? Call for vote? Do you want a roll call? Yeah, we could do a roll call.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
For appointments, Exhibit B, winter coaches. Do we need to make a motion about that?
No, we don't need to vote on the coaches under Exhibit B. You'll see the list for all of the winter sports coaches, head coaches and assistant coaches at the high school for this current year. Second page, Exhibit B, so it's still in the B, it's for middle school. Thank you. It's an honor once again. I feel like I've been spending a lot of time with Jackie lately as she's been honored as not only our district teacher of the year. We were at the state last month being honored. And she was on the cover of the calendar, as you're aware, and she had an amazing experience as a Fulbright Global Educator and did extensive travel. She will be traveling again at the end of this year, working with special ed teachers and developing IEPs for students. And, help me out Jackie, Tanzania, Tanzania, right? I was right. Wow.
That's awesome.
Tanzania. And so we're thrilled that she'll be out there representing us on an international level. There's a brief bio of some of the activities that Jackie's involved with at the school at TBS, with the Climate Committee, after-school enrichment program, variety show, eco fair. She's always involved, she never says no. She has a great deal of energy and a great deal of passion towards our students. And it's obvious we see her interact with the kids. So it's an honor to have her here this evening. We have a very small token of our appreciation for Jackie for you. Could you introduce, I know it's Bob and Robin, your parents?
Yeah, so obviously I have to thank my parents first and foremost. This is my mom, Robin Therson, retired teacher for three years, job art in Wallingford.
Oh, wow.
My dad, Bob Therson. And this is my grandfather, 95 years old. My mom. One of my best friends here, Poppy, also boss of TiVo, so they enjoy us as well. I'm really honored to be here and to hold the awards.
So. We're going to have you, this is a very small token, walk around and change. Your members' hands, they'd like to congratulate you. And if your family would be so come and come up and we'll take a picture. Or I can get you back there.
They can go up.
Bob's good?
Yeah, Bob's good, he's good, yeah.
Looks great.
He's where I get my useful, to have an energy. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thanks, babe. Thank you. Thank you so much.
She's so lucky to have you.
Oh, my God, I am so happy. Are they going to air shake stuff? Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. I got you. That's a nice hat. I know. Yes.
So. If you don't mind, sir, we'll put you on the website.
It's on Facebook.
Always on Facebook. All right, what time you on Facebook?
Oh, my God. I'm on Facebook. My eight-year-old mother's on Facebook. She does stuff on Facebook. How did you even get like? My mother's, she's on Facebook. She drives me by. I'm not on Facebook, but she is. Did you see this? Oh, did you see this? Oh, I gotta show you something on Facebook. Okay. Now, how do I get to this? It was there and it's gone. I'm like. Just watch the board. They look like sisters, I'm not, they're a daughter. I was thinking that.
Okay. We got the scouts on.
Must be students.
So we have attached Exhibits C, the board briefs. I'm obviously not going to read those to you, but there's a number of activities that are going on, some of the highlights happening in the schools.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just want to compliment the staff of North Branford. You guys, I went to some of these activities breakfast with Santa. I went to the concert at night for the Jerome Harrison. I went to the grandparents' concert. And I want to say you guys do a great job and you guys deserve to be recognized for all the work you do outside of the regular school activities. And I know a lot of you volunteered with time. And I was so happy to be there and attend all of those things for my grant order. It was absolutely a terrific show. I want to give you guys an honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Middle Six Shoreline Superior Association recognition on December 10. We were fortunate to have two of our senior students honored for their work both in and out of the classroom for academic achievement and leadership. Chris Patel and Emily LeBeau were our recipients this year, two seniors, so we want to publicly recognize them for their efforts. Mr. Guads was the attendee who represented the school district. Unfortunately, we had our central office lunch in that day, on the same day. This one had gotten canceled because of weather the week before. We seem to be hitting every Tuesday now with weather events. So I want to thank Mr. Guads for filling in and representing the district and our two outstanding students. We have some updates for our grant award notification, so Ms. Guads is just going to speak briefly about Exhibit D in your packet.
So you'll notice Exhibit D has several letters. Exhibit D needs eight letters explaining some of the various things we received this year. Its total is approximately 1.25 million. We talked about those grants consistently throughout the year and spoke about what we're using that money for, as well as some other grants that have not come through yet that are expected. We are expecting at least another $50,000 worth of money for activities. So if there's any questions in the grant, obviously we'll be happy to answer them. But we've been very diligent in trying to make sure you're informed about how to use
Any questions on the grants? This is just basically an update to let you know the status of the grant and that the money is being spent and what we say it's being spent on. Okay, high school renovation. I spoke to a couple of capital projects earlier that are underway at the high school and some things going on. We also obviously are still in the timeframe for the feasibility study. So we were meeting today with QUNA on the high school renovation. So we had a meeting at 2:00. I invited staff members from the high school to be present with the administrative team and we had a productive meeting. They will be back at the January meeting and they will present. You remember Rusty came to the last meeting, or two months ago, and presented. He'll be back in January. They're more concrete, more finalized with their work and some numbers attached to some of the options. So we're getting to that point where we'll meet in January. You'll have a look at conceptually three different choices. There'll be a number attached to each three and then we'll start with the community education piece where we'll hold public forums and have parents come out and have an opportunity to ask questions and look at some of the work that they've done. So that will be at the January meeting. And that is, that's it for my report.
Any blueprints, negotiations?
So we can update in executive session. We're going into executive session just based upon the legal matter of negotiations and where we can discuss that.
Budgets and operations?
We met earlier in the evening and we reviewed the financial report. We went over several areas where we are consolidating to match the uniform chart of accounts. And there were some budget transfers that we reviewed in order to start to clean up some of the multiple accounts that are in the system that we no longer need. They are cumbersome and they, removing them would also make it more simple for the user to read our report. And all these things are being done in conjunction with the uniform chart of accounts. We're also beginning to work on projections for the fiscal year end. We are in the process of developing the budget for next fiscal year, 2021. The schools and departments this year will be entering their budget requests right into the financial system and all that data is due by January 9th. And that's about it.
Can I have a motion to approve the above noted dates for the budget workshops, which is January 23rd, 2020, 6:00 p.m. at Stanley T. Williams and Thursday, February 6th, 2020, 6:00 p.m. Stanley T. Williams Community Center. I'd like to make a motion to approve the above noted dates for budget workshops. Can I have a second? Discussion? Call for vote? Roll call.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes. For joint instruction and strategic planning, we met tonight at 5:00 before this meeting. Tracy, me, and Jana and Siena got, met and talked about the PL, the project Lead the Way, which is PLTW. She would like to get materials for the new program. The cost would be about $50,000. She would like to use the Title I and Title II money for that. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that? Chad?
Just that as long as we are curriculum for, curriculum directors for science are right now vetting the program against the next generation science standards, if all goes as planned, we will look to adopt Project Lead the Way pre-K 5 so that it will nicely align with our 612 project lead the way program offering.
So this all aligns with our goal for STEM and our ability to drop the science, technology, engineering, mathematics piece down to our K5 learners as well. We're also looking at the potential with Project Lead the Way to bridge to the high school as well. We discussed the possibilities with a common schedule and common times and how we'd be able to share three certified Project Lead the Way teachers between the 612 continuum, which would be great for all our students. So it's exciting.
And we also had data collected for us for the next generation science standards assessment, 2018, 2019. And we are falling pretty far into the top bracket, which is where we want to be. For the 11th grade, the only two schools that scored higher than us was Guilford and Wallingford for the 11th grade. For the eighth grade, it was Guilford and Branford. And then for the fifth grade, Guilford scored higher, Madison, Clinton, and then us. But our grades are definitely, our standards or the percentage is definitely going in the correct direction. I was very impressed by this, so I was very happy to see that. So I'm glad it's going in the correct direction and doing that really well. Oh, for pension, they had a meeting, but I could not attend. I had a meeting to go to that night. Policies?
All right, policies. We have a few policies for second read and approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 1120, student decision submitted.
I think I had a discussion on this one.
The change to that one was on, on the new one on page five. I'm not approved. Walkout. That was the only thing that was changed in that.
Was this the P 112?
Yes.
The student decision. So I had a question on that. If you go to page 15 of 30, under Romeo and Roach, there's a P, which is a hearing panel. Do we have a hearing panel for the board or are we just using? Alternatively, the board may appoint an impartial hearing board composed of one or more persons.
Yeah, we have a hearing officer.
So we don't use the number one anymore where it says expulsion hearings conducted by the board?
We don't use the board. We've used the hearing officer.
So should we even have that in our policy if we're not providing it to the town?
I think that means the hearing officer.
Pardon me?
I think it means the hearing officer.
Well, it says under the hearing panel, you have under procedures governing expulsion hearings. Number one, expulsion hearings conducted by the board will be heard by any more than three board members. A decision to expel a student must be supported by the majority of the board members prevented, present, provided that no less than three affirmative votes to expel or pass. And then number two is alternatively, the board may appoint an impartial hearing board composed of one or more persons to hear and decide.
That's what we do.
So do we even need to do one then since we're not even?
I would leave it in there. Because then you don't have to go back and change your policy. So it's better just to leave it.
Now, do parents have a choice of either one?
No.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call for vote.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policies P 1400, Building and Safe School Climate Plan as submitted. My only question, did that website training ever come up?
No, he hasn't notified us yet. They were still in the process of getting it together, putting it online. He was going to notify as soon as he did.
So, but we can still approve it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because it's an add-on too.
Second. Any other discussion? Call for vote.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 1505, food allergy management plans and guidelines as submitted.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 2010, employment checks as submitted.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 2400, prevention and reporting of child abuse as submitted.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 2230, prohibition on sex discrimination as submitted.
Second. Discussion? Call for vote.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 2000, alcohol, tobacco, and drug free workplace estimated.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 4120, smoke-free environment as submitted.
Second. Call for vote.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Jana Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
Before our meeting, we displayed our work by the students who won the competition to go on to their note cards, which was really nice. And each kid was, came in and they had a certificate. So that was nice. And we also honored the end-of-year retirees. We had an update from CAE, someone came in and they brought us their legislative priorities for 2020. Their four bullets are investing in our students, strengthening the support for social and emotional learning and professional development for educators, and provide resources for students, parents, and community members. This is like for the sand trauma, so many more students face a trauma. They want to address that in schools. Supporting our schools, this one was looking at increased shared services, attracting and retaining quality educators from diverse backgrounds speaks for itself, supporting educator effectiveness for all students. So that was their four bullets I'm looking for listening on for 2020. They also presented what's going on at the legislative level, what they've been talking to representatives about. One was start time, a healthy start time for students beginning school. I think Guilford and Greenwich wind up changing their start time by 10 minutes. It's difficult because it's after school activities and getting the kids home and the buses. Vaccinations, they touched briefly last meeting, but there's a real focus on trying to eliminate non-medical physical vaccinations. So the only reason you could be eliminated now is for non-medicals. And one of the ones that they were fighting against was task force, undirected play. I guess a lot of them wanted students to go out and have unrestricted play, unsupervised play. So they were trying to convince and that was a bad idea. And that was their main goals right now, what they're talking at the legislative level. And then the rest of the meeting was our basics. We had a fiscal report, human resources report, curriculum report, and that was our basic meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee had no meeting, communication, no meeting, and wellness. Can I go into the good of the board before we go into executive session? Anybody have anything for the good of the board? While they can kind of.
Is the shuttle speaking?
That'll be next. I just know my daughter enjoyed the gingerbread wars, so she had a good time doing that.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
The kids and the parents did a great job. They had them in the library. And I think there were 20, 26 houses built and it was great.
They had a really good time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love fun.
Really enjoyed the hay school, so thank you.
Yes, I saw them at the, outside the concert.
Oh, yeah. They're two.
Yes. I was going to say the concert was great.
Yeah, I was going to say the concert.
The concert was great. And then had a good time there. And yesterday I did the kind at Beth's.
Nice.
At Jerome, it was very nice.
Thank you.
Anything else? Visitors and press.
Hi, my name is Cara Papa and I'm here because I have a few things that I just want to bring to the board's attention. I've sent emails in the past about these things, but I've gotten to the point where I felt like I needed to come in. So mainly they're just solutions. One thing is, is going from Jerome Harrison to Totucket Valley, we're a very small and shrinking district. And so I think that the board should be making policy and the board should say what the policy is and it should be across the board. So some things I've run into are the attendance policy at Jerome Harrison, you can email. And so usually when my son takes the day off, I take the day off. And so at Totucket Valley, because their interpretation of the law is different, which I don't understand how that could be, I was told I have to talk to somebody. I can't leave a message, I have to talk to somebody. And so that, for me, is not convenient. So I wanted to bring that. I just think that you guys should set the policy and it should be the same everywhere. Now, I understand teenagers might send email on them, you know, there can be some gray areas, but for a parent who's working and a single mom who's working, who's a teacher, it's not very convenient for me to have to do those things. So I'd like those things to be dealt with. Also, given the climate that we are living in now, I would like the board, since they haven't looked at it or revised or voted on it since November 21st, 2013, I'd like you to look at P 4080, political activities of school employees. As of right now, there is nothing in there except for maybe taking a leave of absence if there's a duty for civic duties, if they're in an employed position. if there's a duty for civic duties, if they're in an employed position. However, there's nothing in there stating that if you live in the town, being elected to a position in the same place that you live. To me, I try to go by honesty and integrity and I don't really think that being an employee and being an elected official in the same place is a good thing. I think if you live out of town and work in one place, that's a different story. But if you work for the Board of Ed, say, you have access to people's confidential federally protected information and that makes me nervous. So I, I think that that needs to be readdressed. I think it could be addressed in a humane manner, but I think it needs to be readdressed and looked at for future. I'm also here because I would like to give my input on the new school. I'd like to give a little bit of a different idea. If you go on to Ed's site and look at our data, we've been shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. And unless Americans decide that they can afford to have families of six or five, we're gonna keep shrinking. If you look at the data that came out for the town's future, most of us are in our mid-forties and the town is aging. So I really don't think that we need a new high school. I think what we need to do is we need to take the high school way, use the building as a place where our students can learn their passions, figure out what they wanna be and have really highly competitive eighth graders where we can be sending them off to schools that we already pay for out of our state taxes. We already pay for the Connecticut High School syst, technical high school system. They can come out college-bound. We have a commissioner that came out of the Connecticut Technical High School system. We have Yale grads that are coming out, we have NASA engineers. We already pay for it out of our taxes. It's already there. We could send our schools there. We're close enough that three of the schools can support our students. We also have the Voag schools, we have the Sound School that our students already go to. We have Lyman Hall. And there's actually one up outside of New Haven that I just learned about this year. Our students can go there. And there are other districts in the state that send their students to secular private schools like Norwich Free Academy. So I don't think that we should be spending tens of thousands of dollars to pay for programs for high school. We should improve our students, eighth graders, and they're leaving people competing. Many of us already send our students outside the district. I will be sending my student outside of the district for high school, so he will not be in the high school. We have five hundred and forty students, that was published then, I didn't see what it was as of October first. So I'm, I'm sitting here and I was listening, the teachers, I looked at the teacher's pay scale. The teacher's pay scale compared to our administrator's pay scale isn't, isn't comparable. We asked them to have a six-year degree, they should be running the professional development. We shouldn't be spending more money on professional development. We started a professional development director, I believe it's called. And Mr. Schoonmaker was sitting next to me in that budget meeting and I asked him, I said, is this gonna save us money at some point? He said, yes, it will. Well, I look at the budget and we're still spending eight hundred thousand dollars a year on professional development that we hired somebody to do, to develop. Why are we spending more money? We should be spending money focused, have our students go out into the world and, and put us on the world stage. Our teachers are putting us on the world stage, but we seem to be paying more for the administrators than we're paying for the teachers. So I just wanted to come and say that. I know it's the holidays, but I hope that you've listened and you can hear me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session as, oh, is there any more? Visitors and press, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section one dash two-two-five of the Connecticut General Statutes as permitted by Section one dash zero-zero-six of the Connecticut General Statutes to discuss Agenda Item one X A, negotiations on affiliated employees and status of negotiations between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Before we dismiss?
Yeah.
To go, I just want, we have some special guests here. So are you, are you here for, for the? All right, stand up, just wave it out to the board. What's your name? What's your last name?
Hi, I'm Gavin Neal.
Hi Gavin.
I'm Jennifer Ofrida.
I'm John Love.
What have you here for?
Joe Fair.
So you're overseeing?
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on the.
Greg Leon, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you. Anyways, this was very educational for the boys.
Good.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you guys. That's it, that was it for this one.
Okay, thank you.
Washington.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Happy holidays, everybody. Happy holidays, everybody, thank you for coming out.
Merry Christmas everyone, thank you.
The next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.